Just about back rolling.
You guys are gonna be watching traffic, you realize when people get mad. Everybody starts moving, they're like alright, we can go ahead and just start going. We'll go to the other side.
It is seven o'clock. Seeing that all the members are here, let's go ahead and get this meeting started. We are starting today for August twenty first, twenty twenty five, uh, planning zoning commission. First off is roll call.
Uh, Commissioner Fink here. Uh, Commissioner Wolf.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Uh, Commissioner uh, Volkmann here. Uh, Commissioner uh, Barrett.
Here.
Uh, uh, Commissioner Headstrom here. And uh, Commissioner.
Eric.
Here, okay, sorry, I can't read your.
Okay, so with that being done, we'll move on to last month's minutes. Is there any amendments or? Is there a second on the item last year?
I motion to approve the minutes from the July seventeenth meeting, twenty twenty five.
I'll second that.
Moving to second to approve the minutes for. Uh, July seventeenth, twenty twenty five, calls in favor, please raise your hand. Can put sign, motion pass. We'll move on to new business. S E twenty five dash oh one, creation of one parcel, less than forty acres and zone agriculture for the purpose of constructing. One single family common located in section fifteen, township eleven S, range four E, at the request of Justin Green Thurlow.
Okay, uh, this is only the second one of these subdivision exceptions that the. Commission has uh, reviewed. Uh, if you recall back in uh. Uh, last, last year or twenty twenty three, uh, the Thurlow Estates subdivision was planted. And this was part of that parent parcel that 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 subdivision came from. So it was created since since twenty seventeen, so if he's wanting to split it. Uh, for an additional residential home, then they can uh, they can do that through the planning. Uh, the applicant is proposing the splitting of an existing fifteen acre parcel. Into one nine acre parcel and one seven acre parcel. I, it's my understanding that the nine acres will be for construction uh, of the single family home. While I believe the seven acres indicated on the survey that I've submitted to you. As track one will be acquired by the property to the uh, west that would. That would be uh, Mr. Atkins' property. Per the provisions of the subdivision exception procedure, all parent tracks split. Once since January first, twenty seventeen are allowed the creation of a second single lot. For residential purposes approved through the subdivision exception by the planning commission. Note that track two will will not be part of the Thurlow subdivision uh, approved in twenty twenty three. The split uh, will also separate the newer fire dissection from track two. To prevent any conflicting uses on that lot. Uh, due to the configuration of track two, any additional splits may be problematic. Uh, proposed split is adjacent to federal land on. Uh, the uh, s- south and west and residential subdivision to the east. This lot meets the frontage requirements uh, and. It's the four to one ratio for lot dimensions, and I should say both of those. Uh, parcels will that are gonna be uh, created from this split. Any additional splits to track one or track two will require approval of a short form subdivision plat. By the planning commission and also I would add a rezoning as well. Comments from the public, we've not received any uh, as of today. Comments from other departments and agencies, uh, none at this point, uh, staff is recommending approval. Uh, with the following conditions, record the lot split and covenant provisions with the register of deeds and that would be this document here. Or just kind of let you guys know what I'm referring to here is the application. That gets recorded, uh, any additional splits on track one or track two unless approved as a subdivision flat by the planning commission. Uh, you can approve with the above referenced conditions or approve with any additional conditions as deemed necessary. The uh, area map I gave you kind of outlines in yellow, the general area of the the main parent parcel I was referring to. And that's getting split and then I also included the survey. Uh, showing the the two tracks being created with that. The uh, the applicant is here, I believe, and uh, to answer any questions.
I will open the section up to public.
Right now.
To to the applicant.
To the applicant, so. The applicant would like to speak, you are welcome to speak.
It's present, I'm not the applicant, but I am the landowner.
Okay.
Do I make up the vote?
Sure. And then please say or state your name and address.
I'm Justin Thurlow, I am the landowner. And uh, somebody might recognize me from a couple of years ago, we did Thurlow Estates. Uh, all that is shown, by the way. And uh, this is last piece and it is all covered in trees. And it's out of the valley, it's not agriculture ground. We need to do something with it. My best place, like I appreciate you guys, a couple of years ago is. Curtis Creek Housing Development has one direction to go and that is west. And this is kind of last two pieces that we kind of get. And Brad and Ryan, Brad Atkins, Brad Forbes. Are kind of the last two guys, kind of pick that pieces up. So, I I can't do anything with it, I need to do something with it. But yeah, it's covered in trees, it borders parks. It's a really nice piece and I can't wait to see what they do with it. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I will in the public, before that, I have some some things I need to address. The public is invited to speak to the board during the public hearing portion of any item under discussion. Please raise your hand, after you, after being recognized, give your name and address and proceed with your question and comments. Shortly after the applicant presents his case, the planning commission may ask questions about the applicant, the board will discuss those answers. After the board rests, the chair will invite comments for. From interested persons for our board against review control, the board will conduct discussion and take action if possible. Citizens are asked to live with your remarks, please do not repeat comments already made by previous speakers. Chairman may have a time limit, the board will attempt to be fair, flexible and hear all those that are interested or heard. All zoning changes, conditional uses and subdivision proposals will go from this board to the county commissioners, with recommendation of approval or denial. All issues heard this evening will go to the county commission after the fourteenth day of appeal period, if applicable. Should you be interested in tuning meeting, please contact zoning administration for the county clerk for the scheduled hearing date and time. If you wish to file protest petition, please contact zoning administration for the forms needed. Zoning administration will explain the petition process, thank you for coming.
And I would like to just kind of add to that, I think that it was, I think you all, the board had wanted me to kind of. Go into a little bit more of explaining the the petitioning process of as far as like when this particular. Case, if it is appealed. Uh, will go to the uh, county commission. Uh, in uh, basically two weeks from today. And so that's uh, that's would allow for time for a protest petition. To be submitted. Twenty percent of the area that was notified. But at this point, uh, the the action that the planning commission will be making tonight. Will be final unless uh, that any protest petition is filed.
So if anyone from the public would like to speak, you are. Whatever that's called, it's yours.
I would like to answer any questions, anybody here that. On any scenario or situation with the property.
Okay, thank you. So I see there's no one, the public is coming up, people just close to the public. Is there any questions that the? Staff would like to give to the applicant? I think it's.
Sorry, yes.
Come on, I want a little more of a question.
So on the fire station. I see the dotted white line around it, is that what the mayor give, because on the survey. Yes. It ends. Right about here, I mean, I'm sure this is still part of your guys' property, or are you giving this whole? Section to the fire station up until, I'm just going off of the survey, that could be. Because it ends right here and I'm sure the fire station is aligned right here.
The piece of the fire station I have donated to the Gary County Fire Department.
Yeah, yes.
Uh, it does not go too clear to the trees.
Okay.
They section off the piece, I think it's like an eighth of an acre.
Yeah, it's not.
It's enough, it's enough to handle two fire trucks to where they can control the house development for Curtis Creek.
So on the survey, the angles look a little bit off, like there might be a small portion, maybe an acre. Where would that go into the fire department or is it part of track two?
The 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 lines go along that tree line.
That right side follows the property line of what was Thurlow Estates that we got rezoned a couple of years ago. Uh, it follows the tree line and it basically follows an easement coming out that very corner. And goes right along that curve.
Yeah, the fire station and that that piece of land is not actually on the.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, that's right.
Well, yes. Question I have is if it's only fifteen acres, why is it planted?
Well, he would like to build a house and he owns the piece of property that bo- that borders the west side. And he would like to build a place for his mother-in-law and he would like to build his own house. On the opposite side, it it's basically a valley to where the elevation change is roughly maybe twenty feet deep from the top to the bottom of the valley. It has horseshoes around fishing game. And there's really nothing that can really be done with it, I put it up for hay occasionally, but there's. I get like one bale off of it from what I can weave in and out of trees. And uh, there's just nothing else to really be done with it. And uh, Thurlow Estates, which borders to the east. Uh, there's one house, a beautiful house, that's already going up, all four lots sold. And they're gonna be, I can imagine they're gonna be just as nice. And it's just a place for. Curtis Creek Development to kind of expand.
My, I just have a question, uh, Mr. Atkins, you were talking about uh, putting uh. My understanding was that this was uh, that west lot, the one that's uh, that's track one. Yeah, is the one that you're getting and it's going to basically, you're getting. It's a multi-keeping ag, is that correct?
That's right, yeah, so it'll be, if we do build a mother-in-law house that's up there, it'll be. Multiple years down the road, but right now it's gonna continue on with the uh, the ag piece of it.
Okay, so.
To add to my twenty.
Add to your your.
Correct.
Okay.
I was I was still put up for hay and get my one bale of hay off.
So the proposed split is in that natural valley, is there a landmark district?
It's a pretty, it's a pretty.
Okay. What is um, water, the water source for a potential home, is it?
Well.
Yeah, it's. Out there, for water.
The entry to uh, track two, I'm gonna enter. Thirty-five hundred avenue. Yeah, is it my chart?
It's up.
Yeah, it it's uh, Roden, Roden Department had already authorized or approved of an entrance that's going in there with the.
Okay.
Correct, and so he he'd already looked out and made sure that it meets all specifications that's.
There's a old driveway that's been there basically since before the lake went in. And it's still there, so it exists, the tube is still there and everything, uh, it's just kind of how they kind of lay it out. But there there, I always thought there was kind of easement, like a ride, like kind of ride away. And I guess you guys kind of figured that out from what I understand.
Ruth, about it?
Tim. Okay, so so is there a letter from township, is that township, Bruce, thirty-five hundred township or county?
That's, I I think that's county.
Yeah. And so we have a letter from the county.
Not a letter yet, but it said it's a uh, mark and I think it's already been out there.
Yeah.
Everybody's sort of verbally kind of said that it's okay, but I'll get something in writing.
Yeah, we we want something writing.
Okay. Okay.
It's a little late, it might be, okay Dan, Rusty, everybody.
Yeah, yeah, he told me basically, once this is concluded and everything's good, that he would come out, mark it. And then uh, layer how he would like it once I get a crew in there to actually finish it up.
And I'll get with him tomorrow and have him send that in writing.
Tim, this is more of a question on uh, the split I I think is fine now, but later down. Isn't there a minimum acreage on splitting now, like you.
Three.
I thought it was five, it is.
No, we use three.
It's three, okay, so you could you could flip those a couple more if you wanted to, but.
Yeah, I would.
The way it's kind of laid out, it's not really, it's confusing.
It wouldn't be usable. I wrote, I wrote that was see it happen.
I don't think you do it. Maybe it was a track one, the six acre side, maybe, but that'd be.
I would.
And for the record, I had to send notification also to some folks in Gary County as well. I know the vacation area went all the way across the county line, so.
So just to circle back on a couple of people already asked, you asked about the difference between the little. Little dash marks around the fire station. And then on the survey, the survey doesn't look, and the cousin is doing the dash marks. So is, does the fire. They've been donated, and if you want to step over and look at the site.
May approach the.
Yeah.
I don't know how to say it, you're right. Stay approached. Oh, it is. Yes. Doesn't matter, but this is obviously this right here, you have to technically see. And so I think your question was, it does, does this go with this property or does this go with that property? What do those dash lines mean?
That is strictly their property.
Okay, so what happens to this little, like you were saying, hey, there are people in here that's not in this survey?
From what I understand, when track one sold, that was part of that, so it's it's supposed to, I figured.
It was.
The surveys are.
Yes.
The surveys. It's supposed to go in there closer to the fire station, so it'd be more like an L there.
Yeah.
Yes, that that was a larger part of the four tracks, that was closer to five acres than it was four. So that's supposed to go all the way up to that four one.
So I'm seeing.
Yes.
Well.
So.
The little one to have.
This is what we have for here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think.
Yeah, this thing.
Probably correct stop right at the trees somewhere, whether asking when's the.
Yeah, it does, yeah, that's like. Part of the.
Okay, so this actually, this green should actually come down.
Ends right here.
So the greens should come back here.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
So.
Thank you.
So Tim, is that something that should be corrected on the shape of the track one parcel?
If, has this already been recorded?
From from what I'm saying, track one, yes, everything's been recorded, uh, everything's finalized. As far as the fire station goes. All all I know with that from the contract is I've basically donated it and in what, twenty-five, thirty years, I might get the building and property. As help with county and those things. I I just kind of donate, I'm I'm volunteer fighter myself, so.
Okay.
It's just kind of there.
Okay, then the only reason I, you're wondering though is in the future, I said if there's a situation on that parcel. Where the the fire station is and we want to make sure that uh, we know where those boundaries are, if there's like utilities or something that needs to go in there. You know, I want to make sure that that's well defined.
It's, from what I'm saying, it's very well defined, yes.
Alright.
So so back to that original uh, Thurlow Estates we did a couple of years ago and that item, lot one, that you were talking about. Um, so if it, in theory, has access to both Union Grove and. Maybe maybe the corner thirty-five hundred possibly there.
Yeah.
And and if that both set up close to six acres, maybe someone would want to split that, I just. I would want to see, Tim, and I don't know if that's something that we can research or we can research, but. Like you were saying, it'd be nice just to know that as we're doing this. That this is correct, this picture may not be. But the survey, original survey may have been corrected and have this geography or plus I know how near near. Tax revenue is to Miss Janelle, and this acreage big tax, well, we want her happy.
I can uh, I can call Call Valley.
Yeah, just just for the fun of it, just make sure that.
Just with the registration.
Yeah.
Okay, I was about to add that, yes, Call Valley has actually done all the survey and all this property. And uh, so they have, the, we went with uh, Thurlow Estates, they plotted all that out. When these gentlemen decided it their part, they had basically the east marker, so they went off of the east marker. So all that is definitely available through Call Valley.
And we appreciate very much.
Yeah.
Yes, true. Very easy to follow, yes, thank you.
Does that have any more questions, done from me? Or make a motion?
I'd make a motion that we uh, approve. Lot split for. That's the final number, S E twenty five dash oh one. G N I M four A. With the addition of, we wanted to have a letter in the file from Dickinson County Road Bridge.
Yeah.
In the, there will be his approval, ingress and egress. And then we wanted to see uh, the survey. Clarification, clarification to make sure that in fact that. Original Thurlow Estates. Lot one does in fact go up to the property line. Really join to this new survey and I would call it the west side or the backside of the fire location. To make sure that property is all accounted for.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Alright, it has been moved and seconded to approve S E twenty five dash oh one. With the amendments of a letter. In file from the Roden Bridge and also a survey clarification from Call Valley for the original survey. From Thurlow Estates and into tract two, I believe, and the property. Track one from. Of the original Thurlow Estates. To into, up into the north, north parcel and into the west track two parcel. All in favor, raise your hand. All put same sign, motion pass.
And and guys, I will, I'll 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 go ahead and dig through the other stuff that they were talking about, you're pretty much done.
Okay.
Thank you guys. Take care. Okay, uh, per uh, your request, uh, last month, uh, I've been in the process of gathering. Information from other counties and from the other states. Uh, and to find out how hydrogen is dealt with. And also, um, how. Uh, new oil and uh, natural gas wells are dealt with in other counties as well, so. Uh, I provided a copy first of the resolution approving the moratorium on solar and generally all alternative energy sources with the exception of those currently regulated. Until such time the uses are addressed in the zoning code, uh, the moratorium expires on July first of twenty twenty six. Uh, staff is investigating, one of the things we're trying to do is the possibility of extending. This moratorium for specific alternative energy sources that. You know, at the time of this potentially expiring. Uh, that we have not addressed yet, so I would say like, let's say if we haven't addressed solar yet, I would do us a. Strictly a a moratorium on solar until we get that straightened out. Or moratorium on hydrogen or a moratorium, I just break it up instead of just a general moratorium. Staff has also been collecting information from other counties. Uh, regarding hydrogen facilities and wells that's directed uh, by the planning commission. One of the things that you're going to have to keep in mind on this, what I've been able to read. Uh, I've dealt with, I've talked with. Few counties in the region, uh, here in Kansas. And many of them are, have not addressed hydrogen yet, but they have a question mark uh, by their, you know, kind of a footnote for their. Regulations, uh, because their 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 concern is. Hydrogen facilities and really any of these like uh, data. Facilities, uh. AI facilities, uh, and all of these types of facilities that are are coming on board, you know, over the next few years. Potentially, uh, they use quite a bit of water. And water will be a factor to consider in considering these, and I said this is based on what I gathered from other counties, they said. They put moratoriums on some of this, uh, some of these uses until. The water issue can be addressed and and so that's that's where I kind of talked with McPherson County and. I believe it was uh, Ellsworth and some other counties as well that are. That are aware. and some other counties as well that are, that are aware of hydrogen facilities, energy facilities, but have not addressed them yet because their concern is they put a moratorium on it because of water issues. So that's something to be mindful of. The other thing is, I think that one of the, want me to check to see how new oil and natural gas wells are permitted in other counties. And based on what I've been able to gather, every county that I have spoken with in the region allows natural gas and oil wells on private property. Just that they're allowed, they're permitted use in ag land, no residential land, no commercial land. Strictly ag land is where they're allowed by law. And, and so that's for new, new stuff. And, and they're, they're facing that also historically, that's where a lot of these wells are typically there. But they prohibit them, I think, in commercial and residential areas. The, I've been also in contact with Fillmore County, Nebraska. They are supposedly like the first county in that part of the state to have, or in that part of the world to have a hydrogen well. And I'm currently trying to gather information, I've been in contact with their zoning administrator up there to see if there's, if there's existing well up there for hydrogen. And I want to find out information on how that was approved. And they're going to get back with me next week. The gal that's there now wasn't there when that was approved, so she's got to go back to the previous director and find out how that was approved. But they've been very forthcoming and they've been communicating with me, and I feel really good about this, that, that being a pretty good source for that kind of information. The, as far as hydrogen facilities, what I'm probably going to do to kind of keep this moving, it's probably not going to be next month, but I'm thinking October, to keep this kind of moving along, I'm, I was going to provide you with, based on the additional information I'm able to get from these other counties, give you all some, just kind of start looking at options available for you to consider in, in putting these regulations together, and then kind of give them options if that's what you would, would like. And I think, because, like I say, this is also due, at this point, the hydrogen, the data collection and all of these different things, cryptocurrency and all of these things. They're moving at a fast rate as far as development, but they aren't being constructed yet. So there's nothing to really go off of. So one of the, so what I'm going to try to do is gather as much information, pretty sure we just start the ball rolling with us, as far as options for these things. If that's all right.
And, and we're going to start with hydrogen?
Hydrogen.
Hydrogen is not one because of some leases already occurring?
Right.
For the wells?
Yeah.
So a couple of questions.
Uh huh.
Thank you for that update. Oil and gas, what counties did you visit with, where oil and gas wells are allowed on that?
I would have to, I'll have to check my email again, but I said, I know of, McPherson was one for sure.
And are they allowed without any sort of permit or?
Right, they're allowed by right. The only time they get any kind of permit from the county would be if they're wanting to locate on residential, but I think even they said residential it would be prohibited, so they would be.
So they would fall under Kansas guidelines?
Yes.
Or any welcome and stuff like that? Um, so do we know what the guidelines are to prevent unpermitted wells that may be uncapped? You know, if, if things, if they don't strike?
I don't know, I'll have to look into that and, and call the, call one of them on that and find out one of my contacts. See, because that's a good question.
Is that, I mean, I would like to investigate if that's something that just for that knowledge of where the well is, that we could include if we get that part.
Yeah.
So you, you said that by right, that they, you can, they, a landowner can put oil Derrick on their, not Derrick, a little pump on their land?
Yes.
Can we, in a sense, regulate how many can go on a certain amount? Like if, let's say you have 15 acres, and they have, I, I'm sure they're not going to put 15 wells on 15 acre plot, but I, I don't know if, can we regulate, be like, you can only put one or two to pump out of a big well? Or is that just nothing we can do?
From what I've been able to tell from the, these, especially McPherson and these other counties, is that they, they said, basically, they're just allowed by right in agricultural districts.
Okay, okay.
So then we have transport vehicles moving natural gas and or oil on county and township roads.
Yeah.
Do we have a right to, to be taxed in premium? I know, we don't deal with that, but like, is that something that we can do?
Well, 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 what we would do is, they would probably enter into some sort of road maintenance agreement. You know, and that, that would be between, you know, road and bridge and, and property.
And is that the written instructions or they just know to enter road maintenance agreement?
They, they typically, if they're going to be, we don't really regulate right away. So we don't regulate, our, our regulation stops at the driveway. So we don't regulate people going in and out onto the streets. So it's, so that would be a road and bridge thing, so they would, I think that they're pretty much aware of what's going on. They're, they're aware of the current, you know, how, how these, you know, facilities operate. They, they keep a pretty good eye out on, on who's using those roads and might need to, you know.
I'm, I'm a little confused though, if we have an oil and, and or natural gas wells on agriculture, how do we, and road, and Martin's, road and bridge has to take care of those roads and taxpayers are paying for those roads to keep up? You know, I'm imagining a number of semis going in and out. How, how do we manage that? How do we regulate that? How do we get them to help pay for that?
That would be between, again, the county and that person that's, that's got that development. And I said, the, the only way that that would come to our attention is if road and bridge sees that there's a situation that has to be addressed, they would address it.
I guess I'm not quite sure how you think you would regulate it. It's no different than farmer question for on the county road. We're not regulating the heavy weight of combines, trucks and all that.
Of, of corn trucks, that's a good point.
I was, I was thinking, what about the quarry of Woodbine, all the rock?
Yeah.
They could share on the county.
Yep, absolutely, yes. And there's an agreement out there that we can collect a certain, a small amount of money because of the use of that road, but that's it, and it's on KDOT projects. So we do get 10 cents a ton, I think is what it is. So it's, it's misjudged, but that's what KDOT negotiated, so that's what we're fighting for.
What about setbacks for neighboring properties of the world?
My understanding is they're not regulated in any of these counties, so they could be, you know, I would imagine they would have to meet whatever state requirements, there are KDA here requirements, maybe.
Kansas have any oxygen regulations yet?
Well, this isn't for hydrogen, this is for, I'm talking about natural gas and oil right now.
Okay, great.
Hydrogen is, is a whole other animal. And so that's why I'm going to get some more information on that before I bring that to you.
I saw on my news feed in the last couple of weeks about hydrogen well or something in eastern Kansas.
Nemaha County.
Is that, did you see that?
I, I, I do, and I actually have a copy. I tried to print some things off for everyone. I wanted to submit for the records some articles that I've come up with in my research. So I'll send an email when we get done tonight. But one of those was Nemaha County, they, they hit a well that had like 90% concentration of hydrogen at 3,900 feet or something. So I'll share that with you all by email when I get done this evening.
And that, what I was telling you about Fillmore County, Nebraska, that was the first, supposedly the very first
Of the US.
in the United States that went in, and that's why I was kind of picking on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One, one other thing I wanted to, to bring up, I came across Hytera, which I believe is the, the company exploring in Nemaha County, and they had four color definitions of hydrogen, they had gray, white, blue and green.
Yes.
And I know we had talked about green before, and Hytera is identifying green as hydrogen used or created from electrolysis of water. So with the newer industry, and they were referring to white hydrogen as what's being extracted. So I think in the prior staff report, it had mentioned green, but.
Green and gray.
And gray, right.
Yeah, I think, and, and the others, I just, it was, I, I didn't put those in because I, I wanted to kind of distinguish between the green and gray for first, first.
Okay, but the white is, would be the extraction wells?
Yeah.
That we're visiting now, okay. Very good.
Any else?
Again, just, just kind of reading this on our agenda for today, this item five, miscellaneous. Staff provided copy of resolutions, which is here, for the moratorium on solar in general. Generally, all alternative energy sources, with the exception of those currently regulated. And then I, I just got, I'm struggling with the word addressed. Again, I, I just think about an attorney would say, well, you talked about it, you addressed it, so we're going to ram something down your throat. I, I would prefer that as we, and I know this, this isn't in the rules and regs, but I just want to be sure that, like we talked about last time, we've got something that's pretty definitive. So even in this, this second sentence here, until such time that these uses are, these uses, rules and regs are not addressed, but are fully completed and finalized in the zoning, in the Dixon County zoning code. And I know this is, this is being splitting hairs here, but it's easy to just grab easy terms, address. Well, it is needed to address. Well, an attorney would say, if you've talked about it, you've addressed it, and so we're going to force you to take this. So I would want something that's very definitive. Again, until such time as these uses, rules and regs are fully completed and finalized in Dixon County zoning code.
Okay.
If, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
And that's not too old.
Do you want that memorialized in a minute?
Um, yeah, I mean, I mean, that's kind of what I thought we were talking about last time. And again, this isn't the rules and regs, you're just, you're just kind of saying, hey, this is something we're going to talk about.
Yeah.
But just so that what we're talking about doesn't get watered down.
Right.
I would like to just, as you're saying, just reassert that we're looking for, that, you know, we're not going to address any of these things until such time that these uses, rules and regs are fully completely finalized in the Dixon County zoning code.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I got that. All right.
If I'm the only one that thinks that, or the board members need to, need to speak out, but I've just seen historically a lot of businesses where if it's not defined really tight, then you're opening yourself up for things you may not like, so.
Second, this is question. And, and from, you know, at last meeting, James, you had that request of maybe some sort of text amendment?
Yeah, and, and.
Think it'll be ever here?
Actually, the rules and regs, yeah.
You're back from?
Not yet, we're still, I'm still investigating that.
Okay, is that an opinion from Mr. Paulson or?
It's, it's, I would, we, we have to, I'll, I'll find out, I'll find out tomorrow.
And, and again, we kind of last time, I appreciate you bringing it up, because we kind of joked about, well, let's just make a blanket thing that covers everything that we've never talked about or might talk about. And I don't think that would fly at all. We want to be really specific that it would be on the, on the, on these alternative energy and things that we have, that we have not fully completely finalized the rules and regs on those items or the things we want to keep at arm's length, so we don't have to review or have to accept any applications for until such times, you know, fully, our, our research and things complete.
Okay.
I have a question about public outreach. Whose responsibility is it, is it this board, the commission, the county to invite public to, you know, provide opinion on these alternative?
Well, if it's a discussion item amongst the board, usually that there is no public comment. There's no public comment until there's a resolution in front of you. That's typically the way that works. And that's the way it has always worked. So, I mean, it's, typically, it gives you all a chance to kind of digest the information, and then staff will come up with options for you. You would direct me to give point, you know, whatever option is wanted, and then at that point, that would be published in the paper and then give the public in general a chance to, to comment.
So there are a lot of citizens a lot more intelligent than me, would it be prudent to encourage, you know, questions? You know, a lot of folks I know ask really good questions, you know, to help, help us dissect what the public's opinion is and where they kind of want us to go.
Well, they can, here's, here's what we normally do, is they can attend the meeting and get kind of insight, but as far as input, the input won't come until that resolution is in front of you, or that, right? You know, those, those amendments. So, but you can obviously, like I said before, as if I want to do your own research, you can, you know, talk to somebody who's smarter than me, and happily have at it. But usually that kind of input though, from the general public isn't usually entered until it's something is in front of you.
And as a new member on the board, is that a Dixon County standard or is that Kansas?
It's a Kansas standard.
Okay.
That's, every state has that kind of policy, all planning boards have that.
I was visiting with a new resident to Dixon County, they moved here from Harvey County, and had attended some zoning meetings, and at their, Harvey County zoning, they, they have a, a public comment time at every meeting, and the, the resident was, you know, asking if we have that right, we didn't, you know, just.
Harvey, Harvey County, their planning commission is probably not a recommending body. They're not an advisory board, they're probably a standalone, that's why they do that.
Okay.
You are a recommending advisory board, you all are.
Their, their decision's final.
Right, their, their decision is final. And your art is, your decision is just a recommendation.
So moved.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting, raise your hand. Put the same sign.